Thank you, Karen, so much.
I call the meeting to order for the February 28th study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Wonderful. We're now going to current business. First item is clarification on items on the consent calendar. Is that what we're running into right now? Yeah. Councilmember Kleiman, do you need clarification regarding any items on the consent calendar?
I do need to, we're talking about the consent calendar? Yes, I will need to recuse myself on item number nine due to proximity to my personal residence.
We'll make note of that. Perfect. Councilmember Stapleton?
None.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Wagen?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
None.
Mayor Proton O'Neil? And I have none.
Mayor Blum?
Yes.
If I may, it's not on the consent calendar, but item number 18 tonight. I just want the folks to know from a staff perspective, we are going to be recommending on that item. That's the one to appoint for the Arts Commission to continue that item. Given the number of applicants for that, it would seem to make the most sense to go through the vetting process through the ad hocs committee that is set up. So, given just the number of applicants of 12. So, that's what we will be recommending on that item and the candidates are, have been informed about that as well.
Wonderful. And I am in full agreement of that as well. And it looks like Councilmember Wagen would like to say something about that?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of work around that. Would that be a separate ad hoc that we're looking to form? Or would that be kind of the ad hoc we would do when we do all the boards and commission seats that kind of happen and follow through towards the June appointment process for the unscheduled vacancies?
Currently, it's a separate one, but if I could maybe ask the city clerk when the regular one is scheduled to go?
For the annuals boards and commission vacancies, we are opening up the nomination period or application period in April. And then the applications will be due early May for nominations in June and then appointments June 27. So, it's up to council if they want to do that with the annual appointment or do that as a separate.
I would think it, sorry to interrupt. I'd think it'd be better just to lump it all in because you would have to form a separate ad hoc just for this and then you'd have to then assign three more members or two other members if you chose, Mr. Mayor. But to be on another ad hoc where it's easier and more efficient probably just to do it all in one fell swoop.
I'm in complete concurrence with Councilmember Wagen about that. I think for efficiency and to make sure that all the members of public that would like to apply have ample time to do so. And I don't think the vacancy, the unscheduled vacancy in the Arts Commission is detrimental right now. So, it would be nice to make sure that we give them a little more ample time and then we can bring that back to our original ad hoc and bring that through and kind of keep that consistent with the April piece. If everyone's in agreement, I'd be in agreement with that.
I think since that item is agendized during current business, so we can kind of make, have a formal action of that when we get to item 18 during the regular meeting, then.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to study session two. The next item is an update on the Western Snowy Plover Management Plan.
Thank you, Mayor Blum, and city councilmembers. C. Mellon, Jurgen, Community Development Director. And with me is Chelsea Krager, our Senior Planner. So, we want to talk to you this afternoon about this Western Snowy Management, Western Snowy Plover Management Plan. We've been working on it for about six years. We're getting really close to getting an actual hearing set with the California Coastal Commission. We want to daylight with the new council, get your input. From a staff standpoint, we have some concerns because we're starting to get some input from the Coastal Commission on certain elements of the plan. We want to kind of share our thoughts with you, get some feedback before we continue working with our Coastal Commission partners. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chelsea. She's going to make the presentation for you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Chelsea Krager with the Planning Division. I am here to provide an update on the Western Snowy Plover Management Plan, which is a conservation plan for our eastern Peninsula beaches to protect this little bird, a Western Snowy Plover, that calls that area home. It's a federally listed species as threatened under the Endangered Species Act. As Simone mentioned, we have been working on this plan since 2017, which is six years. And we're here because we're moving through it and we're getting closer to a Coastal Commission hearing date and wanting to make sure everybody is in the loop about what is going on. The Western Snowy Plover is a small shorebird that lives on our beaches. It lives up and down the California coast on the beaches, but we do have a population of them here. They've been federally listed as threatened since 1993 and they camouflage pretty well in the sand. You'll find them nesting down in little footprints or even tire tracks and they blend in quite well there. When you're out in the area, you might see a bunch of shorebirds running around, a lot of small shorebirds. Not every bird that you're seeing is a Western Snowy Plover. We also have keel deer, sanderlings, sandpipers, other birds that can be easily confused with Western Snowy Plover to the untrained or even sometimes the trained eye. So, Newport Beach is not the only city that has a conservation plan or is looking at developing a conservation plan. There are conservation plans up and down the coast and I'll give some examples in the next few slides. The city has been directed by California Coastal Commission to prepare this conservation plan and the purpose of it is to promote recovery of the Western Snowy Plover and the dune restoration. The dune is that habitat area that they call home. Here are some examples of some other areas that have conservation plans in place. We have Dockweiler State Beach, Monterey. You'll see these kind of wood slat fencing. And then different kind of fencing here, oceanic dunes and Golden Gate. Golden Gate is really more of a symbolic fence, right? It's not that same wood slat that you're seeing on those other slides, but more of the symbolic fencing that doesn't physically keep somebody out, but does clearly delineate that this area is special. Here in Newport Beach, the area highlighted in green is the area that has been federally designated as critical habitat area by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. That includes the area from B Street down to G Street. And this is what led the Coastal Commission to telling the city to create our own conservation plan. Some history about how we got here. We mentioned we've been working on the plan since 2017 for six years, but we actually began monitoring the area in 2009 when some Western Snowy Plovers were seen in the area. So, we began monitoring in 2009. In 2011, there was a suggestion from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to put up some fencing and the city did. So, city staff put up some amount of some wood slat fencing. In 2017, some additional birds were observed and additional fencing was installed. And then some of the original fencing was removed due to visual impacts. This prompted the California Coastal Commission to send an enforcement letter to the city because neither the installation nor the removal of fencing had been done with the benefit of a coastal development permit. So, Coastal Commission said you need a CDP, a coastal development permit, to do that and the city applied for a CDP for the removal of some of that fencing and to develop some sort of longer range plan. So, that brings us to kind of where we got to, the developing of this larger plan. So, the city hired a biologist to help develop the plan. There have been community outreach meetings and open houses. There have been four of those, three iterations of this larger plan. And it grew over time as the application went back to Coastal Commission staff and Coastal Commission staff would say this application is incomplete and here are some additional things that need to be addressed. And one of those things was a dune restoration plan, which covers a very large portion of those beach, of that beach area and is a lot of that thick plan that you have in your packet. A lot of that is the dune restoration plan. The bottom of this slide too shows that wood slat fencing, that was some of that original fencing that went in. So, the key components of the current plan that we have today that is submitted to the California Coastal Commission, we have education and outreach, which is meant to inform beachgoers about what is going on out there, what about the birds, what do they look like, how do we protect them? Adaptive management implementation, which allows for changes to our strategies over time. Predator management, which includes litter control. Beach operations, recreation management, which is how we use and manage our beaches. Critical habitat and avian conservation area delineation, which is done through fencing, symbolic fencing, signage and adaptive management triggers and performance standards and regular reporting to the California Coastal Commission. Here's an example of what some of that might look like. To the left of this walkway is some regulatory fencing that you might see. At the entrance of the walkway is a stencil that would be sand blasted onto the concrete so you could see this Western Snowy Plover habitat area. That would also be at the end of the walkway. And though it's not shown in this image here, the plan also includes some low 24-inch permanent fencing that would be installed along the edges of these walkways in the habitat area. Here's some illustrative examples of what some of that might look like. The top left is an example of some interpretive signage. The top right is what that stencil might look like. And the bottom is an image of that low 24-inch permanent fencing that would go along the edges of the walkways. So, in addition to that 24-inch permanent fencing, the plan also calls for temporary seasonal fencing. There's a lot going on in this image, but I'll tell you what each of those lines mean. So, the red line, that red polygon is that habitat area we saw earlier. That area was previously highlighted in green. You see it outlined in red here. Those other colored polygons, you'll see yellow, purple, green, blue. These are areas that birds have been observed historically. And so, the black polygons, you'll notice, fully encompass all of those areas where birds have been observed. That is where the temporary seasonal fencing is proposed. The temporary seasonal fencing, I don't have an image of, but it would be 36 inches in height. And when I say seasonal, I mean it's for the wintering season. The birds like to spend their winters here in Newport Beach, which is October 1st through March 31st. So, this is when that seasonal fencing would go up. And it also would move each year based on where the birds are being observed. If they're moving to different areas of the beach, if they're in a smaller area, a larger area, that seasonal fencing would move with them and could even move mid-season. The last line on this image that I'll draw your attention to is that blue line that kind of goes from the wedge all the way down with some arrows. And that is the trash route. So, where the trash truck drives goes on the sand and then it avoids going through that critical habitat area, except at the very top through a little bit of a corner there. Another main component of the plan and a part of the dune restoration plan is removal of the E Street walkway. So, this image is from 1972 and that's important because this image is showing what development existed prior to the coastal act. So, the image shows the D Street walkway, the F Street walkway and the G Street walkway, but unfortunately, it does not show a clearly paved E Street walkway. So, because we don't have evidence that that walkway was constructed prior to the coastal act, we also don't have a coastal development permit to allow that walkway to go in. Coastal Commission staff has recommended that that walkway be removed as a part of the dune restoration.
And so, just to add to this, so this is an area that we're working with our Public Works team to identify, do we have any imagery prior to the coastal act being adopted or implemented that can prove that that E Street walkway was in place? So, this is not a given that we're going to remove it, but it's something Coastal Commission is asking for us to do that, but we want to continue to kind of work this issue through with them.
Thank you. And as Simone has mentioned, staff does have some concerns about what the plan looks like today. One of those is coastal staff is recommending a seasonal dog prohibition. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. Another area of concern is the recreational area between B Street and C Street. I have that area highlighted in purple. That's a really heavily used beach area and it is located within the habitat, the critical habitat area. And also the beach area between G Street and the wedge. So, that's outside of the critical habitat area and we use mechanized equipment there and staff would like to continue to be able to use mechanized equipment there to upkeep the beach and keep things clean and go ahead.
Sorry. And then just to add to that, what Chelsea just said, so that lavender area there, you know, that's a heavily used area and we have our future lifeguard, junior lifeguard building is going to be built out there too and our lifeguards are going to be kind of all over in that general area. There's a lot of debris that gets accumulated over time. We don't have the staffing to pick up all that trash by hand. We need to continue to use our machinery, our mechanical devices to do all that beach cleaning. And at the same time, you know, that habitat, even though it's mapped on the federal register, the actual habitat area is to the right of it. So, we think we're safe to continue to use all of our equipment there just to clean that beach area. So, this is an area of concern for us and we want your concurrence that we're going to continue working with Coastal on this particular area.
I mentioned I would bring up the dog prohibition a little bit more, so I got its own slide. So, Coastal Commission staff is recommending a complete dog prohibition seasonally during the winter season between D to F Street, so those two blocks. The city has robust dog regulations already in place and there's an hourly prohibition. Dogs aren't allowed on the beach between 10:00 and 4:30. That's year round. Any hour that the dog, that dogs are allowed on the beach, there are leash laws with a maximum six-foot leash and off-leash dogs are never allowed in any public spaces. So, the city already has robust dog regulations in place.
And this is again, another area of concern that we want to continue working with Coastal Commission on where they're saying that to prohibit dogs completely, we're saying we have rules in place. The Chief Cartwright already sent me this today, you know, they have stepped up their beach enforcement. So, dogs without leash are enforced by animal control, which is in the police department. You know, since last July, they've stepped up their enforcement. They're issuing a lot more warnings. They've issued a few citations. So, you know, that enforcement side is helping, it's working and we have a little bit, some few more ideas here we're going to share with you on how we can kind of continue that process here.
I also want to make sure that we talk about cost. So, this does come at a cost to the city. The implementation of the plan would of course include things like fencing, that dune restoration project over that large area of beach and signage. Ongoing costs would be biologists to monitor the birds so that we can report back to California Coastal Commission and see what of our efforts are working. Education for the public, operational changes, including limited use of mechanical equipment that we've mentioned and staffing changes. So, expected costs could be about $1 million estimated for implementation and $300,000 a year for operations.
So, I want to conclude with this slide here. So, we have some concerns we want your feedback on, but at the same time, we do believe that we're great stewards of the beaches. We can do some low-hanging fruit for now as we continue to work with the Coastal Commission. So, some ideas that we have that we could go ahead and implement is, there's nothing wrong with starting more education out there, using some type of docent program to educate the public of the Snowy Plovers, the critical habitat area. We can go ahead and do some signers, some stenciling. We do have some fencing that we've put up, which is more symbolic fencing. You can see the imagery there on the right. It corrodes really fast, so we've recently taken it down because somebody actually got injured from that. But we are planning on putting up some more limited symbolic fencing there. So, this is the low-hanging fruit that we're looking at. We want your concurrence that even though we may not be ready for a public hearing with the Coastal Commission as we work out through some of these outstanding issues, we want to continue being good stewards of our beaches. We can do some more additional education, additional signage out there. Just to get the word out that it is a critical habitat area. And finally, on the last slide here, we want your feedback on the, some of the concerns we've shared and then, you know, we're going to look forward to working with the Coastal Commission as, on some of these changes and then set up ourselves for a hearing sometime this year. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you. Let's bring it back up here. Councilmember Avery?
Thank you. How big a part of this, of the budget is the dune restoration?
The budget of the dune restoration? So, the majority of the cost, when we say that $1 million, majority of it is that dune restoration. So, Public Works just has experienced recently of the Peninsula Point where we removed all that encroachment. That was very, very expensive. You know, you would, you would never guess that it cost that much money to do all that work. Public Works has already said, this is a very expensive project. So, we think bulk of that $1 million is going to be the dune restoration. The fencing is not that expensive.
Right. And then when we do the restoration, if we do it properly, the plant life maintains and expands perhaps?
That's correct.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Wagen?
Yeah, I went down there this weekend and I specifically parked at E Street, not really knowing, but walked my way through over to G Street and had a good time kind of checking out all the damage from the storm. But, you know, the E Street walkway is what I walked out on and I noticed there were some e-bikes that had been doing some brodies out on the dunes, you know, just kind of, you know, maybe they didn't know, maybe they don't understand, but, you know, this was what I pulled up on just randomly the one day that I decided to go. And then, I don't know, did they update any photos of the people walking? Yeah, so these were just, you know, people that were randomly walking out there, you know, just, you know, the random time that I just happened to go out there, there. And you can see then the yellow on this image to the right, that's the restoration that you're referring to, I think, when Coastal said the easements of people's homes were out there. And that rope goes all the way down, I think, towards the wedge for the most part. And it looked like that the, one of the residents I was talking to had just randomly ran into a friend of mine from high school and he had said that it really wasn't taking the plants. You can kind of see some growth, but he had thought that it was kind of not doing as well as he thought, but, you know, that, that was just his personal opinion. But you can kind of see how people are just wandering willy-nilly through there without really any, anything. So, I, I do think some signage will be helpful and possibly the fencing that you showed that you pulled up from an interpretive center or something, that, that doesn't seem like it's overly restrictive, but it's enough to keep out the e-bikes and that, you know, errant behavior. I don't think that the person probably riding the bike in there knew what they were really doing, but without any proper fencing or any type of way to say, hey, stay out of there, that's going to continue, I think. The fact that I just happened to see it that day and it was after a rain, that's why the, I think the soil was in a position to show what it was showing, but it's clearly, there's that behavior out there. This would be the walkway that Coastal is asking to be removed, correct?
That's correct, the E Street walkway.
I think for my concern would be that empties into a street and there's street parking there. So, I would, I know, we don't want to eliminate street parking because it's at a premium down there, but if there's going to be street parking, somebody's going to still walk up there. They're going to walk to the boardwalk and they're going to say, well, you know, it's always been a walkway, but now there's no longer a walkway, but I'm just going to walk through. So, there's never going to be a chance to restore that area if people are, they've always known what they know and they'll continue to their behavior, they'll just walk through it anyway. So, you know, I think that's the dilemma we're in by removing that. If you kept the sidewalk in place and put fencing up, I think you'd do a better job of keeping people out of that area. And it's just a little strip instead of leaving it unfenced and people just casually going through all of the area. Because as those other pictures show, there's people that are going to cut through the dunes because you have kind of two sets of lumps. There was one dune and then there was kind of a flat and then there was another set of dunes. And, you know, people are going to keep walking through there. And that was just, again, a random time that I happened to be there, but tons of people I was observing walking through there. So, if there's no signage, no fencing, you're going to continue up. I think what Coastal is asking for, you know, is expensive and it's a lot, but it's, it's an easy thing. This isn't the most heavily trafficked part of the peninsula. Luckily, this isn't where the primary folks go, the tourists are. It's mostly a locals area. Yes, the lavender area on that map, I felt was pretty significant to junior lifeguards. We spent a lot of time out there. Do any fire pits go beyond that part of B Street or do they end right at B Street? That map that showed all the colors and?
It's, it, I'm looking at the map now. There's, it's, can we go back to that one? Let me see. There's no, there's no fire pits over there. It's just towards, more towards the water.
A tourist behavior on the left of that purple.
I think if you look down from the parking lot, the edge of the parking lot, all the way down to the water, you still, you have some of the fire pits there.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and when I did junior guards, we would have games that we'd do, we'd do flags, we'd do, you know, capture the flag. There'd be a lot of behavior in there and you can kind of see that maybe halfway, the dunes kind of start up. So, maybe you take in the middle of that.
Sure.
And you could, you could have just straight sand. There's no really dune. So, I, you know, I think there's wiggle room to compromise on a lot of this. The other slide that showed all the directional colors and arrows and things, there is a part on there that said, no driving. So, but would our emergency, our lifeguards, PD, they'd be allowed to drive through there without any issue, correct?
Yes, in an emergency, vehicles could definitely go through there.
Because where that red line is in that, that almost rectangle, they would be inaccessible to get there on a big berm day like currently, right now. There, you can't, you could probably drive, but heavy equipment's going to get stuck in that sand. The tide could be the high that day. So, if there was a need, people got, they're going to have to get through, through that part of the sand. So, that was, you know, a potential worry there if they're going to say, no driving at all, but if our emergency is allowed, PD and lifeguards, that, that, that doesn't bother me, so. And then as far as, you know, cost, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of environmental groups out there that we should reach out to as far as grants and programs that we can, you know, try to get some dollars out of. And so, instead of us 100% trying to eat the cost, I'm sure there's some avian protecting groups out there that we should inquire with to say, hey, we're trying to do our part. But I think this is something we can kind of give back to Coastal. I know it's a big ask, but maybe this is something we play nice with on so that, you know, when we have other things that we might be in more conflict with, we can at least, you know, be attempting to give them some, something on our end. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant?
So, Councilmember Wagen covered some of the things that I was thinking about. That was very comprehensive. Thank you. Just some thoughts. As far as metrics of where we are today compared to when we started this, since it has been going on for a long time, I didn't really see any, you know, metrics in your presentation. Anecdotally, I've heard, I think we've all heard from residents that they've seen some really good restoration of the habitat and more evidence of the nesting. But I'm just wondering, is there some sort, how are we monitoring that? And is this project just without a end date? Or how do, you know, as far as the money that we're spending, are we going to be doing that annually? And what are we looking at as like an end date for this project?
So, I will thank you, Councilmember Grant. So, I'll just talk about a little bit of the numbers that we have and then Chelsea can talk about the end date of the program. So, this is what we have in our report right here. So, this is really much more specific towards our area of town. So, the, what I've learned working on this project for six years, the plovers, it's very, very rare, very, very hard to see or find. So, you actually have trained specialists that did the count. Our count only goes up to 2017. We haven't, we don't have any further counts after that, no. So, you can see there the, that wintering count there at the last 2017, there's only 15 they counted. So, it's a very rare bird to find. We did have, we did find some additional information and this, these are counts on the west coast. Now, this is not total counts, but this is all of the west coast, they did spot checking. This is from the federal government and you can see there from the, like 2005 was 1,800, then it dropped to 1,500 in 2027. And then now up in 2019 for the last five years, the count has been pretty flat and stagnant and it hasn't really gone up much at all. So, the bird is still in a threatened species list. It's not going to come off anytime soon. And the whole idea and from the federal side is that, you know, you got to develop a program just to protect them. As far as our cost and what we're looking at, Chelsea, what's, what has been the discussion? Is it going to improve forever or is it something that's going to be finite?
So, we have a plan that we would be, or we would be reporting to Coastal Commission annually for five years. What happens after that may have to do with what the numbers are looking like, are looking like? Are we being successful or are we not? Are we holding up our end of the deal?
Okay. And then just back to the removal or possible removal of the path. It sounds like that would be a benefit to us to not do in some cases maybe. And as Councilmember Wagen said, maybe we can adjust the paths, path in a way to be more environmentally friendly. As far as finding evidence, are we reaching out maybe to the community, like to the residents? There's a lot of residents that have been down there for a really long time that might also have some sort of, I don't know, photographic evidence or just a thought that?
No, it's a really good idea and we need that help. We really do because we got to prove to the Coastal Commission that there was something there prior to the coastal act. So, we're doing our best internally inside the city hall and then reaching out to the community is a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stapleton?
Yeah, just to expand on that, what was the year 197, what was the timing?
1976.
We've gone social media through different things. Maybe we could all share it as well. Maybe there's somebody on the peninsula that's been there since the 70s that could certainly find a family photo, maybe down by E Street.[1747.34] certainly find a family photo, maybe down by E Street. Where is this coming from? Is this a direction from Coastal? I mean, it seems like we're being incredible stewards of the beach down there. We're doing so much as it is. I can't imagine there's a lot of communities going to the kind of effort that we are. Maybe there are.
So this is all being directed by the...
Coastal's coming to us. They don't feel like we're doing enough?
So we wanted to remove the fencing. They said you need a coastal development permit. When we applied for it, they said, ah, you need a plan. You know, what's your plan to protect the birds and the dune restoration? So that's that never-ending cycle we get caught up with Coastal. So we've, we've spent a lot of money on developing the plan. We've still got some concerns. We still want to work with them, but a lot of this is generated from Coastal.
So we want to remove the fence, now we're going to get more fencing and bigger fencing?
That's exactly it.
Got it. What is, what is the fencing in Huntington Beach at the, at the Jetties? What is that fencing for?
That's a least turn preserve. The least turn is a different shorebird and they have a, a pretty sizable colony there that returns to that area to, to nest every year. But it's not the type of fencing that we're looking at here.
Is there ever world where, I mean, that would be, to me, the far extreme that would just talk about quality of life for visitor goes?
It's not, it's not something that has been discussed or brought up at all, no.
Okay. And why aren't we counting since 2017?
2017 is when we submitted the original coastal development permit. And I think, I don't know if anybody kind of knew that it was going to take this long to, to get to an end. So we, we just haven't started up the counting again.
So to, to do the counting, we have to hire a biologist, somebody who's trained on this type of shorebirds and do the counting? We've just been hyper-focused on just getting this, this plan done. So that's why we haven't done it, for any further counts.
Okay. And I'm just uber-sensitive to the E Street walkway for reasons that councilman, that we've talked about up here. But also, we got an email today from a resident that her daughter is handicapped and uses that walkway. So there's a lot of locals down there that utilize that. So I'd just be very careful before we head down that path. Lots of work to do.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Stapleton. I'm going to just switch gears a little bit. I appreciate what my colleagues have said up here. But, you know, pulling a little bit off of what Councilmember Stapleton said, you know, I, I feel like Coastal is very big on public access. And so, you know, I, I'm fairly amazed that they want us to get rid of public access in order to preserve a habitat for the birds that seem to be, you know, historically doing, doing better. And then we get to another point of dune restoration. And this really is where I'm going to take just a quick moment to focus. That I think, you know, and Councilmember Wagen had some great photos of what the erosion is looking like down there. And we've been fighting to get more sand on our beaches for quite a bit of time. And so, you know, my hope is that as we're going through this negotiation process with Coastal, and that's really what I would, you know, my personal opinion on how I would like to direct staff for this is, this is a negotiation with Coastal. You know, I, I do agree with some of my colleagues that we do want to preserve the birds, but I also want things for Newport Beach as well. And a lot of that is sand. And a huge amount of this is, we're losing their habitat because our beaches are eroding there. We're not able to put more sand there even though we have the ability and there is a way to actually get sand to put on those beaches. But a lot of those issues are, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, are that Coastal is inhibiting some of that idea that we can put more sand on those beaches. So somehow I feel like expanding that habitat by creating more sand for both the public and the plover would be beneficial to the city and Coastal Commission. And so if there was a way, we could start looking at this in more of a holistic piece to say, yeah, you know, we'd be willing to cordon off something, but we need to increase some of the surface area out there. We need to drop more sand on these beaches. What are your thoughts on that, Simone or, or Dave? I mean, where, is that a, is that an impossible ask? Are we, are we in crazy town now?
I, I don't think it's an impossible ask. I think it's definitely an ask. I think we have to kind of balance it out with, you know, how do we protect those shorebirds? How are we to protect the birds at the same time, increasing the sand area? I don't have, I don't know what the solution is just now, but it's something that we need to continue to push forward.
Okay. And I, I think because, you know, as we look for some of the federal programs that we're, are spending a lot of time on with the Sunset Beach replenishment program, we lose a lot of that sand the moment it hits the Newport Pier and kind of hits the ravine. We're just not seeing it replenish as much as we would like from Balboa to the wedge. And I think that erosion is very real. And in trying to protect both the species and the access, which are two things I think Coastal is very, you know, focused in on, I think that there is a solution in which we could do it that, that might have a little bit of a variant on what they're asking. Where maybe if we say, we are willing to do a few of these things, but what we need in return is the ability to drop more sand on these beaches so that we have the ability to one, protect their habitat and protect coastal access at the same point. So I, I'm very hard-pressed to agree to anything where we're going to start limiting coastal access with removing any of the walkways out there. And, you know, as Councilmember Stapleton made the point, you know, there is ADA accessibility to our beaches that I think is very specific to Newport Beach and I would like to maintain that at most costs. And, you know, it's, it's great to see the birds are doing better, but I do think that, you know, they're, they're used and utilized by both people from all around the state that come to our beaches as well as the birds. So if we can integrate it in the most cohesive way with maybe the least intrusion, that would be definitely where I'm looking. Less fencing, more signage, I think is a, a better option. But really pushing back a little bit on Coastal to say, you know, we're not trying to limit access in Newport Beach. We really want to maintain the access to visitors and residents alike. And we are having an erosion problem and we would very much like your support in putting more sand on these beaches so that we can keep their habitat and keep public access alive. So, Councilmember Climen.
Thank you. Thank you, Chelsea, for the thorough presentation and for all the comments already made. I guess I just have one question. I mean, is this actually a negotiation or is Coastal saying, this is what you have to do? I mean, if it's a negotiation, maybe we take the position of we're willing to do some of these educational pieces first, signage and, and those kinds of things, some outreach, and then have a checkpoint in place where we do a count and see if there's an improvement out there and then take the next step based on the outcome of that information.
So to answer your first question, Councilmember Climen, so is it a negotiation? We, from a staff standpoint, we believe it is. You know, we've worked with the Coastal Commission for a long time and we know that they tend to like to kind of expand those programs bigger and bigger. And we try and need to contain it in a box to what's reasonable and what's practical. And that's what we want to continue doing. We want to continue to be good stewards, as you just mentioned, you know, what kind of those easy things that we can do, monitor, track it, report back to them. They are, are expecting that we finish a plan and get it to a hearing. So it, it is definitely going to be a conversation that we need to continue to have with the Coastal Commission. We consider them partners in all this. So we're not adversarial. We want to work with them. We want to find that middle ground. And we've been successful with a lot of the projects in Newport and we feel we can continue to be successful. I do appreciate the councilmember, all the councilmembers' input and feedback. That's really helpful for us as we go forward with this plan.
Wonderful. Seeing no other comments up here. Wonderful. Let's go out to public comments on this item. I think it's just you, Jim. No? Oh, Lauren, come on. Let's hang out.
Thank you, Mayor Blom, members of the city council. My name is Jim Mosher. First, first of all, I, I have here the staff report that was published last Thursday and it was anticipating a, a hearing before the Coastal Commission in April. It sounds from what we're hearing today, five days later, that that's not coming up. The hearing will be much later in the year after a lot of back and forth. So I'm wondering what happened between Thursday and today? I didn't hear that explained. Second, it's good that you think the birds are doing better, but I didn't really see anything corroborating that. The last count we had in 2017 seemed to show that they were disappearing from Newport Next comment is, in the six or seven years that this has been going back and forth with the Coastal Commission, it's good that the city staff has been providing advice. That's their role to do that to you. But we also have in our city charter, a citizens' commission that is charged with providing advice to you on matters that have to do with recreation and beaches, our Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. And I'm just curious how much involvement they have had in this plan in the last six or seven years. Also, as I believe Councilmember Wagen pointed out, the birds are seasonal, the dunes that are there are there all year. They themselves, whether the birds were there or not, this particular bird, they still are an environmentally sensitive habitat area for other animals and plants. And it's not clear, as I think it was not clear to Councilmember Wagen, what we're planning to do to protect the dunes all year, not just during the western snowy plover And then I noticed also in the report, it said as soon as, which may be, I guess, a long time in the future, this plan is adopted. The city was promising to develop similar plans for other areas of Newport Beach. I'm curious what those other areas are and what the timeframe might be for developing those other plans, if we're really going forward with those. And then finally, as I pointed out in writing, our local coastal program mentions that we have western snowy plovers in Newport Beach, but it doesn't mention that we have them on the beach. It says we have them at the Semenica Slough and we have them in the upper Newport Bay. So I'm just wondering how the plovers are doing in those other areas of Newport Beach aside from this particular beach site? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? The snowy plovers? Come on up.
John Pettichini, 1526 East Oceanfront. Who is in charge of this plan for the city? Is there, is it, this gentleman on my left?
This will be a great time for public comment, not question. So go ahead and make your comments and if there's anything we can't answer, we will.
All right. That's fine. So whoever's been in charge, well, I believe this is the gentleman that you said, he's been doing it for six years. Prior to his, to, to his position, there was a person on the staff back in 2010 that said that these fences that were up and on D Street were temporary, seasonal only. Since 2010 to date, they've never been removed. And that was, fence was supposed to be a temporary fence that was going to be removed during seasons and then put back when they were nesting. Now, we, we have this plan, you have this plan that is going in front of the city council because you want to remove the fences that were there. But I don't know if you've heard your own comments, the fences have been eroded and have been removed. There's hardly any fences there now. So why are we going through all this million-dollar expense when there's barely any fences there? As you say, they've eroded. There's, as, as, as an owner and been living there for the last twelve years, if you can find a fence, it's hard to find. So I don't know why we're going through this whole process. And also, as you saw some of the, the pictures that you took of the area where the, you redid the, removed and restorated, restorated the area right in front of the houses from G Street all the way down to Wedge. If you look at those pictures, the city devastated everything from removing all the, the plant life. On, on November 30th, those, those plants were removed. On December 1st, you never heard a bird, you never saw a bird because all of that is just completely devastated, completely devastated. It's a desert between the Wedge and D Street where the city did their restoration. And yes, some of it's growing back, but there are no birds on the beach up against the houses no longer. Those, all those have all gone away because of the, the restoration that was approved. The city shouldn't do any restoration. If you, if you, if you do a study, anytime after 2017, I can tell you, there, the birds have come back a lot more than 2017. The snowy plovers have been brought back. And I can tell you, it's because you didn't do anything. And that's what, you don't do the restoration because it's only going to make things worse with, with the snowy plovers. And what, what you guys decide here and what actually implies, it, it happens, is completely different. Because if you walk the beach, you'll see the devastation, it's like a desert out there what you did for, for the restoration. It's, it's night and day.
Thank you. Next speaker. Any other speakers on this item?
Hi, my name is Laura Curran. As Jim Mosher referenced, Diane Dixon hosted multiple presentations with the Fish and Wildlife Service and other organizations at Mariners over the last years. May, some of you may have attended. Some of the items that they brought up that I have questions about in this plan. One is, the reason you want to eliminate, reduce exposure to dogs is not, is because when animals such as a dog are present around birds, it reduces their ability to nest, to feed their young because they feel a threat. The birds feel a threat because they see a dog, they hear a dog, they smell a dog. And that threat can happen in some cases, as they explain at Fish and Wildlife, when a bird is, it might see a threat hundreds of feet away. They might smell the threat hundreds of feet away. So while an, a dog in a leash is better than a dog not in a leash, the reason the Coastal Commission is asking to not have dogs is because the animals perceive the threat and it reduces their overall weight, it reduces the amount of time they feed, their ability to forage, their interest in foraging because they feel like it's harder for them to go places where they might have a threat. And so to say, well, we're only going to have dogs for certain periods of time for the bird, that's like saying, there's only going to be, there's only going to be a speeding car in front of my house at 70 miles an hour for two hours a day. It's not going to be 24/7, it's going to be two hours. Well, I'll tell you, those are really, those two hours will result in me not leaving my house. And it's the similar type of situation for the birds. The other question I didn't understand from the fencing discussion, the Fish and Wildlife Service said that the last fences had, that one point the city put in fences with posts and the post acted as a station for predators, especially some of the raptors or big birds that then went after the plovers. So we just want to understand the changes that we're making to the fencing to make sure that we don't create a different problem. And I think the city tried to address that, but that should be clearly discussed in this plan. So I do want to thank Councilmember Wagen for going out and looking at the habitat. I was, I went out in December and it was great to see all the plovers out there and really kind of see them having, enjoying themselves, so to say, if we're going to anthropomorphize the birds. But this is, we are lucky to host these communities. They're part of Newport Beach and we should be doing the appropriate habitat registration. Now, sometimes it takes longer for native plants to look like they're in good shape than people might be familiar with, but that's part of what our staff, Dan, our staff in the landscaping group, they're very, Kevin Pecar and his team are very familiar with the habitat requirements and how plants fit into that. So I think we need to give them the resources to address that as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name's Jim Dillman. I live down off of F Street on the peninsula. A couple of things I'd like to bring up. One, the reason this ever got to Coastal Commission is they put the fence up with no permit. So the one that went to take the fence out, they needed to get a permit. Then we have to get a plan. Two, it's not a, not a nesting area, it's a wintering area. They do not nest there. They winter. And three, the landscaping and plants they put in there where they've torn all the encroachments out, I do not recognize those plants. They're nothing like out in the dunes, nothing like the native habitats around there. They've actually gone and installed bunch grass at the end of the street, end of F, and I'm thinking, why did they have that? In 65 years of living down there, that was always sand. There was never like any, any vegetation up by the houses except what people encroached. And I understand taking that out, but what they put back in is just an eyesore. And everything that went outside their yellow rope is all full of weeds that were never there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I would like to echo what that gentleman just said in saying that I, I, I do think it's insulting that you self-proclaim and call yourself good stewards of the beach when you erected the fence, which is now costing at least hundreds of thousands to this now and projected another million dollars. That would not, I would not self-proclaim yourself as a good steward of the beach by putting up a fence, as Councilmember Grant said, without any statistics. You don't have any numbers. You don't even have any projections of what you are trying to accomplish by erecting the fence in the first place. After you erected the first fence, you put up another one. And that's when I got involved. And I had meetings with you and David Kiff and Fish and Wildlife. And as you said, Fish and Wildlife, they did not ask you to put this fence up. This was put up by the city without the direction of Fish and Wildlife. I was there. It isn't something that is up for debate. It is a fact that it was put up by Parks and Rec and it was not put up by the direction of Fish and Wildlife. It is a wintering bird. It is not a nesting. It is not a nesting. So we shouldn't say that there's nesting spots. These birds come in October and leave sometime in March. But the reckless behavior of putting up a fence, which you did, that doesn't even protect the bird, because there's no birds that were even counted inside the fence, it's a shoreline bird. It doesn't go where these fences were erected. I live at 1217 East Balboa. It is right in between D and E Street. You're absolutely spot on. By removing this finger to the boardwalk, I mean, to the beach, would just create paths for everybody to go arbitrarily to the beach. And the fences have no statistics, whether it's to try and, the numbers, whether it's keeping the birds up, down, we have no projections of before the fences were erected, whether we're trying to keep people out or keep people in. There's no numbers or statistics that substantiate putting a fence up. I'm all for putting a stencil on the boardwalk that delineates trying to stay and keep patrons, beachgoers, on the boardwalk and not stray into the dunes, but I am not for fencing, temporary or not, especially without any statistics, that anything you have done has done anything but bad for the beaches. There's been people that have been hurt on the beaches, they look horrible, there's metal shards. I took pictures of the metal shards to bring to the meeting if you want to see proof of how poor condition this fence is. But again, as Councilmember Grant said, you have no statistics of any, of anything that substantiates putting up a fence. So I'm not for any of the fencing to keep the dunes shut.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi there. My name is David Look. I'm, I live right on the corner of E Street, right where the ramp comes down. I'm retired, and as an observer of the beach, I think I would fall on the side of being more on the bird's side. I would do anything to protect the birds or increase the bird population. But as a scientist, I have the same questions my neighbor Drew does. I don't even know why we're discussing this. I have nobody in this area that you've delineated looks out at the sand for more hours every day than I do as a retired person right there. And I have, I can count on one hand the number of people I've seen even walk through that area. So putting up a fence there is insane. I mean, I don't know what, like I said, I'm a renter, I don't own a house, but hearing some of the comments that have been made, which are totally untrue, makes my blood boil thinking about how little information people are coming at this problem. This is totally unnecessary since the fences have been removed. I see the birds having more freedom, being able to move. I love them. They, they're outside my window at night, they move freely. No one walks through that area. When the street sweeper comes, I have to drive halfway down the wedge to find a parking place. There's no parking in this area. Nobody comes here. Nobody walks through. There's no need for fencing. It's crazy. The other thing, as an entrepreneur and starting many companies, the thing we're thinking of constantly is opportunity costs and where to put money. The fact that you're talking about spending upwards of a million dollars and hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to upkeep for a problem that doesn't exist, no one has defined even the problem. This isn't a problem. The birds in the five years since I've lived there are absolutely thriving from my un-objective, undata-supported observations. They have at least doubled. They're everywhere, they're doing great. No one bothers them. The, as Drew said, the fences there were absolute eyesores. There's still shards all over the beach. They're dangerous. Like I think someone else said, they're birds of prey can post up their, this, this whole proceeding to me is just, to me, government going the wrong direction. I can't believe we're even discussing this or spending time on it. Leave it alone. Let the, the people that live there have their beautiful view. If you've been out there recently, the view compared to when the fences were there is night and day. It's beautiful now. Why would you mess with that? Why would you put fencing in? You don't even know if you put all the fences and signs in the world will even make a difference. Anyway, you can tell I'm gaining speed here. But I'm quite passionate about my view and the birds and their safety, and this is just insane. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item?
My name's Ryan Gee, 1355 East Balboa Boulevard. I thought I was going to say that I was a long-term resident, but most of my neighbors here have been there much longer than I have. I've been down there since 1991. Spent most, the majority of my life there, right at F Street. So I and my family, my daughter and my wife are fortunate enough to go out to the beach regularly, every day actually, twice a day. We go out in the morning and the evening, and I just wanted to share a few observations. Some of it, sounds like it's a little bit redundant, but I did want to share what I've seen. The fence that has just been removed, I sent an email a couple of years ago when I started noticing it deteriorating very badly. The steel stakes were breaking off, they were looking dangerous. I sent an email to the city, I never heard anything back regarding that, and now just tonight, I've heard that it sounds like somebody did eventually get hurt by one of these fences. I was so relieved to see that that fence got removed, and it wasn't until earlier this afternoon that I discovered that there's now a plan to put another fence in, which is why I'm here to share my opposition to that idea. As many people have said, I get to go out multiple times a day and observe what the fence does, which is create a perch for the birds of prey to just patiently wait to see what they want to prey on. And it seems very silly to consider putting up another fence that is just going to do the same, I think the same thing. The other animals listed as predators are feral cats on the, on the long 400-page document that you had. I wasn't able to print that all out. But I think there's a lot of regular house cats also that are domesticated and not feral that go out and prey on these birds at night that we've seen at nighttime. The other concern I had that I thought sort of skimmed over was the no-driving area in the, on the map that they had discussed. I think the representative said that it would be available for emergencies only. I know that the lifeguards and the police patrol this area regularly, and my interpretation of emergency only would mean that they would not be able to patrol this area, the lifeguards. I'm also concerned, my, my daughter was lucky enough to be a junior lifeguard her entire life, starting at the very beginning to the very end. They are wanting to take some of this area from that program, and I wonder how much more they would like to take from the area that they'll be using regularly. It seems like...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Dennis Borowski, 2037 Seville Avenue, Newport. I live right off of M Street and frequent the beaches on a regular basis throughout the year. Walk, walk almost daily and also ride bikes up and down E Street ramp and down the peninsula. And one thing's for sure, I haven't, haven't ever seen a snowy plover in that area, but I'm not out meandering through those dunes because there's no need for me to do that. The view is beautiful enough when it doesn't have a fence. The fence is obtrusive, it's, it's an eyesore for the community. I cannot even imagine having a fence down at M Street, which is now being tentatively proposed on the plan. M Street is a very busy and active beach area for both visitors and residents. It's kind of our local spot to go. We walk out the sidewalk, we go to the immediate left, we go to the immediate right, and it's, it's a beach hangout area, and it's a terrific place to be, and we, we love it there. I don't live on the beach, on the oceanfront, I live three streets off, but for those homes that are on the beach, once again, it would be an eyesore for those residents. I know that I've been a board member of our homeowners association for many years and the past president and very involved in the community. I've talked to a lot of people, I even distributed an email about the fact that there's a study session today. And everyone that I spoke to, and I can't speak for everyone, but everyone I spoke to was in opposition of any fencing or any type of restriction to our beach at M Street. And I think that, that philosophy goes beyond M, down to G, down to E, F, and the other beaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Okay, perfect. Let's bring this back up here. And I just want to make a couple of comments to all the speakers. We appreciate the comments. This is a study session. We're, we're not here to make mandates today. We're here to actually talk to you guys about your concerns, and staff is doing the same. They're, they're not here saying we want fences everywhere, we want to destroy the beaches or your view. We're reacting to things that are in the past, and our job is to look for the future. It's to figure out how to best mitigate what other state agencies are putting on us. And so I do believe we're great stewards of our beaches in Newport Beach. And, you know, I will say, I personally took offense to that statement, that I grew up here, and I think we have done an amazing job taking care of these beaches, and it's why you guys love them so much. And I think staff is fighting for that same thing. We're not here as a body saying we want to change Newport. We're here dealing with California, which is a very different entity, trying to figure out the best way to mitigate what they're putting on us. And so that's why we're bringing this out to the public in a study session. And I want to make sure we all, we all understand that. This isn't about the city of Newport Beach trying to encroach upon what you guys have or your views or changing any part of our beach. It's that staff is trying to find creative and beautiful ways to figure out a solution to this. So I just want to make that clear. They're doing an amazing job, they have been great stewards of our beach, and we're trying to reach out to you guys to find out what the best solution is, and we're with you. We want to have the least encroachment available. We don't believe these fences are working, which is why we're trying to take them away, which is why we're now in this solution or this issue that we're in right now. So I thank you all very much for that. Seeing no other comments up here. Staff, do you need any direction from us at this time?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Wonderful. Let's go out for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Mr. Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I noticed from the agenda that you're about to adjourn to a closed session where you're going to discuss a real estate negotiation, price and terms of payment for a portion of a public right-of-way at the east tip of Lido Isle. This same announcement has been on the council agenda in the past. It was on the agenda two times in the year 2021. It's coming back again tonight. There's never been actually any explanation of what the actual transaction is about. And since your discussion in the closed session is limited to the price and terms of payment, I am just curious if a, if the negotiation is successful and you agree on a price and terms of payment, is the actual approval of this, the substantive contract or whatever you're going to be entering into, is it coming back publicly to the city council for approval so that the public can weigh in on the merit of the project rather than just the price and terms, which you will be discussing privately? So the question is, will there be a public airing of what this is about at some point? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on agenda and non-agenda items? Please, head on up.
This is my first time. I'm Virginia Anderselmore. I have lived in Newport shores for the last 25 years, known of it for a couple more years than that when I met my husband. And I'm here kind of because I was really surprised when I walked out on, onto the beach off of Orange Avenue, sorry, Orange Streets, excuse me. And we have this walkway, and at the end of the walkway is this pole that has these shower things so that you can rinse off the salt or the sand. And the beach is erosion, erosion is there. And I actually took a couple of pictures, one before the last storm, and there was about maybe 20 feet of ocean before it dropped off. And then I came after the storm, and there's only 10. My understanding is that this erosion happens every winter, and the ocean brings back more sand, but not all of it. Well, 25 years ago, in front of this, the shower, there was several feet before the lifeguard, and then all the people were laying out there on the sand. So we've lost near half of it. And that's my real concern. Now, there is that one issue of number, on number here, number eight, that sounds like you're restoring the sand down the way. Well, I think you need to relook at it or have something new for West Newport Beach because it's coming closer and closer, and I really don't want to move. The other thing is, is that I think that there's more that needs to be done besides just restoring the beach. It is my opinion that 70% of the US population has now accepted that we do have a climate crisis and that we can do something about it. And I'm, my feeling is we have an opportunity that is, with the subsidies that are coming from the state and the, and the federal government, we could have like an Apollo project and create our new green energy city. We can, we and Newport Beach could put up solar panels on all of our roofs. I mean, it's not every community that has kind of that wealth that people could do this. And we could, you know, if we do it before the April, it'll be that, at that time, even the daytime energy, you get to get credit for that. After April, then it drops down to 75% during the day, but in the evening, if you have, if you stored that energy, you can sell it back. So people could even make money off of this. So, and they would save money with all of the, you know, electric cars and everything that we are going electric. And this would just, I just feel like if we do not really look at this, we'll be losing our beach for our children. And I have a paper to give you.
Wonderful. You can hand it over to our city attorney. Thank you. Any other comments on agenda and non-agenda items?
Good evening, my name is Laura Curran. First of all, I have a question regarding the clarification of the consent calendar that came up earlier. Some of the council members recruit themselves, but I'm assuming this will come back again during the regular meeting for that question and for the public to comment on.
That's correct.
The consent calendar. Okay, just to clarify. Okay, I wanted to comment on the legislative agenda that you will be looking at tonight. This is an important opportunity for the public to see the priorities that the council's working on, and we appreciate your attention to these issues. In the item of housing and land use regulations, there is an item 2A that calls to support efforts that would allow cities and counties greater control over placement and management of residential recovery facilities, sober living homes. I would first of all applaud this effort. Second, encourage you to refer to them correctly as licensed and unlicensed drug and alcohol recovery homes. Sober living homes is a smokescreen for unlicensed homes that operate without any real regulatory oversight or efficacy measures for people that pay money to go there to get treatment. So we should be clear that we're talking about licensed and unlicensed drug and alcohol recovery group homes, because those are separately regulated from other group homes where the city does have control. Second, in this legislative platform, we should be talking about education, which is hiring the lobbyist, which was promised to the residents in 2021. Education for the council, education for the state, education for the county, about the impact of drug and alcohol recovery homes on residents and cities and on the cities which have to deal with the issues and the enforcement requirements. So education, there is a call for efficacy in the legislative plan and in terms of the drug treatment. And I encourage you to follow up on this because the hearing in 2021, which Councilmember Dixon at the time and Cadi Petri Norris chaired, the state director of Department of Healthcare Services said that there are no measures of efficacy. In other words, the Department of Healthcare Services does not measure the number of people who enter a drug recovery home and who are, for example, sober six months later. Their efficacy measure is how many drug and alcohol recovery beds are available in the state. It would be a great piece of legislation to require that they measure if people who go to those drug and alcohol recovery programs actually are successful and sober and alive six months later, a year later, 10 years later. That's also a fiscally responsible approach to take. Finally, enforcement, the city is, you know, impacted by the enforcement issues, the fact that residents of these group homes and the operators do all kinds of things, which then the and the operators do all kinds of things, which then the neighbors call about and ask for help, and we get this back and forth about who can enforce and who can't and what can be done. I'm currently dealing with an issue related to noise that's taken over four months and is still not closed, and for some reason, because they're fishing the pond, it's going to, it takes four months. Why can't we call, we need to have a better avenue for enforcement. I know these are important to all of you, and so please pay attention to them in the legislative platform.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda and non-agenda items? Wonderful. Seeing none. Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with the city's real property negotiators to instruct them as to price and terms of payment regarding negotiations with Palmer Lucky related to a portion of the public right-of-way adjacent to the properties at 929 Zurich Circle and 949 Lido South, and that's all set forth on the agenda under item 4A.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're going to recess until 5:25 for the regular meeting. They call the meeting to order for the February 28th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, rule call, please.
So record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Thank you. There's no closed session report this evening.
Perfect. Now is the time for the invocation by the Reverend Matthew Hambrik, First United Methodist Church of Costa Mesa.
Let us pray. Spirit of God, when we pray to you and ask you to be with us, we know you were already here, yet we still ask. We ask because we are anxious. We ask because we want to be faithful. We ask because we want you to remind us that you are here with us. Guide us in our decisions. Guide the decision-makers in this room to do what is best in your sight. Show us all how to love and how to help, make us all that you have created us to be in the spirit of the One who sends us. Amen.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleinman, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited, three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now is the time for council announcements or reports from council members on committee activities and time for council members to request an A1 item to be placed on a future agenda. Councilmember Kleinman, do you have any announcements or reports?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the beautiful ceremony that the city held at Marina Park to unveil a plaque commemorating fallen Huntington Beach Police Officer Nicholas Vela, along with several of my other colleagues.
Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to go to the city-hosted homeless forum with a fellow council member, Robin Grant, with people assisting the homeless. Turnout wasn't terrific from the city, but I know it's recorded, so hopefully that'll be available. But the information was very good, and I'm excited to report there are some regional solutions when it comes to continuing to focus on homeless effort in a city like Newport Beach. I was also at the memorial for the plaque unveiling for Officer Vela and was happy to be there and show support with my other council members. I also want to just announce that the Newport Beach Foundation is opening our May class for the Distinguished Citizen Program, so if you're looking to apply, please go to Newport Beach Foundation website and apply for the Distinguished Citizen Program. I also attended the Santa Ana College President's Circle. I was invited by former Santa Ana City Council member Alberta Christie, who has hosted the Newport Beach Country Club, and it was a great honor to see some of those students and all the working, all the work they're doing on the foundation side for that. And then also myself and Mayor Proteme O'Neill attended the mass shooting and critical incident hosted by ACCOC and also with Sheriff Barnes and a lot of useful information for someone like me who just got elected. So that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. I had a busy two weeks. I attended a update from the former Ford Air and Atrocities Facility remediation group with Councilmember Wiegand, as well as an OCTA overview of the operations in the city with council members Kleinman and Wiegand. I was able to make a presentation to the Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club Women's Auxiliary on what's going on in our city, especially in the harbor. I was very proud to attend a almost final animal shelter tour for our new Newport Beach Animal Shelter, which will be open in the coming months, and very proud to announce that the facility is absolutely beautiful, state-of-the-art, and is fully funded by private sources in our city, but will be a city facility in perpetuity. I also took a tour of the Newport Aquatic Center and met with Newport Mesa School Board Member Carol Crane to talk about potential opportunities for students to participate in arts in our city. I met with and had a good chat with a very prominent citizen, Ron Salisbury. He is celebrating 100 years in operation of the famous El Cholo Restaurants, and he has committed to a $1 million pledge to raise $1 million for charity in this year of his 100 anniversary so that he can provide money to Children's Hospital of Orange County and Children's Hospital of Los Angeles. So you'll be seeing a lot more about that activity, raising that money for charity in the coming year from the folks over at El Cholo. And then finally, yesterday, I was able to attend the Wreaths Across America Mobile Unit that's over at Our Lady, was over at Our Lady Queen of Angels. It was a really beautiful opportunity to honor our veterans, and that unit goes around the country, so we were lucky to have it here today. They had hundreds of schoolchildren there going through and learning about veterans and their hard work for our nation. Thank you.
Councilmember Wiegand.
Yeah, just one. I'm an alternate member of the Orange County Sanitation District, and they had a new director's tour and briefing that I participated in.
Councilmember Avery.
I have none. Thank you.
Mayor Proteme O'Neill.
Yep. I did a few things, but I'll just reiterate the ACCOC event was solid, and I'll be heading up to Sacramento with them next week. Thanks.
Wonderful. We're now going to move on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. This is a non-discussion item. I have asked council to consider reforming the city council homeless ad hoc committee to evaluate the contracted services under the city's homeless outreach program. Wonderful. Strava would be all we're looking for right now?
Can I just quickly ask, point of clarification? It says on here contracted services. Is that?
I think we could probably make an adjustment to say contract services on this piece to both look at future contracts and contracts we currently have so that we can better evaluate both the future and the past that we've already committed to. And if everyone is in favor of that.
Thanks for the clarification, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I could see that again. That's unanimous.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion, the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleinman, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce? I believe you had nine earlier.
Yeah, nothing to pull. I'll just reiterate that I do have to recuse myself on number nine due to the proximity to my personal residence.
Wonderful. Councilmember Stapleton.
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
None.
Councilmember Wiegand.
I do not.
Councilmember Avery.
I have none.
Mayor Proteme O'Neill.
None. Oh, I'm, excuse me, I'm going to pull 13. I apologize.
Wonderful. Pulling 15. And myself, I have none. Mayor Proteme, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the consent calendar with item number one showing amendments, item number nine showing recusal from council member Kleinman, item 13 pulled by me, and nothing else.
Wonderful. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second one from council member Grant. Perfect. We'll now move on to public comments on consent calendar items, 1 through 14.
I pulled 13.
1 through 15. I apologize, pulling 13. Public comments on consent. Okay. Look at that. It's a beautiful day for everyone. Wonderful. Looks like we had item 13 removed from the consent calendar by council member, or by Mayor Proteme O'Neill.
Oh, we need to vote for consent.
Let's go ahead and vote on consent.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, ordinance 2023-3, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach approving an amendment to Title 20 of the Newport Beach municipal code to change the zoning district from commercial neighborhood to two-unit residential and amend setback map S2B to remove a front setback for the property located at 3014 Balboa Boulevard. Councilmembers Grant, Kleinman, Stapleton, and Wiegand, please. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Perfect. Do you want a staff report on?
No. Real quick, the reason I pulled 13 was because there's a reference in here to adding multiple elements. One, discussion of potentially adding a sustainability and resilience element, the other being an economic development element. I wouldn't support adding additional elements at this time. We already have to add an environmental justice element, and the process itself is going to be fairly robust in terms of needing to move forward. I know that we've discussed in the past the idea of working through a plan, dealing with sustainability and resilience, but not as a general plan element. At the time, when we were talking about the plan, there hadn't been the appetite up on council. Maybe there would be going forward, I don't know, but at this time, I would not support moving forward with an additional element addressing that, in particular, given that it, you know, the impact that could potentially have on all the other elements as well as we're trying to work through this. So I would suggest that right now, the general plan committee stay focused in on the required elements and not add additional.
I think that's a great suggestion. I'm in concurrence with that. Any other comments from up here? Let's go to the public.
Mayor Blom, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I would just note that I believe the agenda says this is to receive and file the report. And as I said in writing, I do think that you need to have dialogue with the steering committee so that they will get direction that you want for the general plan update. But I don't think they get direction from one council member or for two. And to actually give them direction, I think you need to put this on the agenda for a formal discussion so that the public knows that you will be discussing it and giving direction and can provide input to you. I would mention, for example, the environmental justice does not need to be a new element. It just needs to be addressed in the other elements, so it will not itself, I believe, likely be a separate element. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Nancy Gardner. I'm the chair of the general plan update steering committee. Between the two committees, it gets confusing. I understand your concern. This was discussed for quite a while at the general plan advisory committee meeting, and it was brought up by one of the members, and it was basically unanimous vote. And one of the big considerations was the fact that in getting grants, for example, which our staff is so good at, many of the, when it's things like water quality and energy and that sort of thing that are related to sustainability, many of the granters now are being, look, you know, well, is this just a one-shot deal, or do you really have a concept in your city of doing a lot of this thing? And instead of saying, well, yeah, if you, you know, if you look in this section and you look in this section and this part of this section, it was, it made sense to have it in its own separate area so that it would be influencing all the others and working with them. Otherwise, I mean, they're still going to be in there, granted, but it will not be as accessible to those looking at the general plan. So that was the reasoning behind it. And as I say, it was, I think, basically unanimous vote, that people on the committee seem to be very enthusiastic about having an element that addresses these things.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? We'll bring it back up here. Mayor Proteme O'Neill.
Yeah, Jim's probably.
Oh, I apologize. We'll come to that in just a moment. Thank you.
Jim's probably right. If we're, but my, to his, to that point, though, I would suggest that we don't, I don't think we need to give direction on adding elements. I would suggest that it be the opposite, that if the, that the plan was to move forward with adding additional elements, they'd actually be asking the council for direction on that. Then I don't recall in our, in our formation documents, formation at all, giving direction to add additional elements. So I would suggest that going beyond the formation is a problem. So that's, that's my view on this one, so that's why I didn't really think we needed to give direction, because if we had wanted to add elements, we would have done so already. So that was more of a formation process issue. So if the request comes to us to add, okay, I guess we could have that discussion, but beyond that, it doesn't strike me as a good idea to go beyond the formation that we'd already created. It is receive and file, so I'm not, I'm not giving direction on this. I just think that had we wanted to add additional elements, we would have done so already, and we haven't. So I don't, I wouldn't move forward or give additional staff time to something that the council is not appropriated. Thanks.
Councilmember Grant.
Well, I do think it's necessary for us to keep the advisory committee on task. We do have a limited amount of time to achieve a very important and large project here, but I also think that it's very necessary for us to be comprehensive in this project. It is a large-scale planning project tool that's going to live for a number of years in our city. I understand what council, Mayor Proteme O'Neill is saying, that maybe this is an expansion of the duties that were already provided to the advisory committee, and I think that we need to understand that the chair, former mayor Gardner, who I think is still in the audience, is saying, you know, this is something that was important to the committee. We've brought this committee together to give us advice. If this is an expansion of their duties, I do think that maybe we do need to bring it back here and talk about it and decide as a whole whether it's appropriate or not. So I would be in support of that action.
If I can say, we are set up to bring back periodic updates, and this is one of them. And I think for the next update, if there's additional discussion that comes out of the committee and there is requested action or some direction, I guess I should say, we would bring that back, and then it would be appropriately noticed, and everybody would be prepared to have that discussion. So I think that's what I would suggest.
Perfect. I think that's a great, great suggestion. Any other comments up here? Perfect. Let's go and vote on that. Receive and file. All right. All right. Let's move on to public comments on non-agenda items.
Good evening, Mayor Blom and honorable members of the council. My name is Jack Bradley, and I'm a reporter with the Epoch Times, but today I'm here as a volunteer promoting Shenyun. So Shenyun is, it's a world-class performing arts company, and it tours around the world every year, and it's playing this week at Costa Mesa.
Actually, this isn't within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council because it's not happening within the city. So it's not an appropriate topic to be commenting on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Please.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Mr. Bradley, why don't you?
Mr. Bradley, why don't you leave the flyers for us, and then we can hand them out afterwards? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Blom, Protem O'Neil, and honorable council members. My name is Wade Womack. I'm a thirty-year resident of Newport Beach. I'm raising a couple kids over in the port streets. As a member of the Newport Maureen Association, I would like to introduce our newest council members to the Maurings of Newport Harbor. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Blom for his recent efforts to advocate before the Board of Supervisors for the new boat slips and public dock at Balboa Marina. These public amenities will be great for recreational boaters in Newport. We are fortunate to have a mayor and council members that are always looking out for the boaters in Newport. This past year, we celebrated a hundred years of Maurings in Newport Harbor. There are approximately sixteen hundred Maurings in Newport that have provided important coastal access to local residents, our friends, our neighbors, for decades and generations. The Maurings were introduced to Newport Harbor decades ago to entice people to move to Newport Beach and to promote recreational boating. If you are willing to take the financial risk, make the investment, a boater earned a location to moor a boat in Newport Bay. With the support of our current and former councils, the Mauring program has flourished for decades, in part because we pay for everything: the mooring balls, the chain, the anchorweight, the servicing. And the Maurings produce a positive cash flow for the city. So you got the hysterical photo. Sorry, it's not bigger, but the Maurings are there in the thirties. And the next photo is just a real clean fairway in the harbor. A recent proposal involves the involuntary relocation of our private property, which is our mooring tackle and our boats, to undetermined locations. The proposal has caused great uncertainty and angst for mooring holders. And each mooring holder, given each mooring holder, has acquired their mooring to be nearest their particular access point, such as their waterfront home, their closest street end, their favorite yacht club, or in my case, my friend's dock, where he lets me park my dinghy. To arbitrarily relocate our privately-owned Maurings and boats will be disruptive to many. To the best of my knowledge, the existing mooring alignment has not caused any significant safety issues and has served our harbor well. Our harbor is looking really good. We are simply perplexed regarding this recent proposal to spend precious taxpayer money on what appears to be the starting point for a complex and unvetted harbor master plan restructure. The NMA has submitted several suggestions to the Harbor Commission for addressing various concerns through voluntary efforts. We look forward to collaborating with the city for the betterment of our harbor. On a side note, I distributed a one-page piece showing how the city can generate more revenue without adding any Maurings to our harbor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Mayor Blom and honorable council members. My name is John Fradkin, and I grew up in Newport Beach. I attended Harborview Elementary, Lincoln Intermediate, and Cronomar High School, class of seventy-six. I'm currently a board member of the Newport Mauring Association and a longtime member of the Balboa Yacht Club. I'd like to talk about the City of Newport Beach's Harbor Commission, which is a designated appointive commission. The Harbor Commission was conceived to advise the city council in matters concerning the harbor and has done its job admirably in the past. We have been lucky to have several prominent and accomplished yachtsmen do tours of duty on the Harbor Commission, including Mr. Avery. A few of the current Harbor Commissioners are currently advocating for a mooring realignment plan, which you're probably aware of and no doubt will learn much more about over the next several weeks and months. The Newport Mauring Association has seen the plan, commented on it extensively, and recently did a survey of its membership, asking whether or not the members favored the Harbor Commission's new mooring realignment plan or not. There were one hundred and fifty-four responses to that survey, and the vote was one hundred and forty-eight to six against it. Twenty-six of those responses came from U.S. Coast Guard licensed captains. All twenty-six voted against it. So I'd want to sort of repeat that again. The general vote was one hundred and forty-eight to six against it, and amongst the U.S. Coast Guard licensed captains, twenty-six to zero. The composition of the Harbor Commission is going to change over the years with different people bringing an assortment of different talents and skill sets onto the commission. That's normal and to be expected. I just have a suggestion and recommendation to make the Harbor Commission function even better going forward, and that is to require at least one Harbor Commissioner to be a licensed captain. The next time that a Harbor Commissioner position opens up, please consider this recommendation before making the appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on, please?
My name is George Hillcomma. I've been a resident of Newport for forty-eight years. I've been on the board of the Mauring Association for twenty-five years. My boat's been on a mooring for thirty years. In my professional life, I served as an aerospace engineer for twenty-seven years. I wanted to speak briefly on a matter that will soon be brought to the council for your review and consideration. This is the new plan by a subcommittee of the Harbor Commission to change the mooring layout of Newport Harbor to a double-row, double-boat mooring system based on a similar layout in America's Cup Harbor in San Diego. The NMA board believes that implementation of this plan would present a danger to moored vessels in both acquiring and leaving the double-boat mooring system. The function of the Harbor Commission is to advise the city council on plans and proposals related to the harbor. This would usually involve evaluating requested and professionally-prepared proposals. In this particular case, the Harbor Commission has taken on a harbor mooring redevelopment project itself without the assistance of qualified and paid professionals. While this, while the Harbor Commission has hired an engineering firm to review the plan, in fact, the work product only looked at the stress loads and adequacy of mooring hardware with the first proposed shared common screw anchor. The NMA board is supportive of the interests of NMA members and all mooring permit holders. As board members, we have tasked ourselves to take a careful look at this proposal. A summary of our findings includes the following. We have looked at, are not aware of, any records of an existing safety issue with respect to the present and now a hundred-year-long longstanding configuration of the single-row mooring fields. One top claim of the Harbor Commission's subcommittee proposal would be improved safety in the double-row boat arrangement. The NMA could not disagree more with this claim. The Harbor Commission-proposed double-boat arrangement is based on one successful use of this arrangement in the America's Cup Harbor in San Diego. We visited this harbor, did measurements, and found no measurable tidal current in that harbor. Newport, on the other hand, has a strong tidal current four times a day. This is an important difference between the two harbors. The Harbor Commission does not seem to comprehend the significance of this issue. With the paired setup, the distance between boats will be about twenty feet. And with an adverse tidal current in play, this means that a boat getting on or off the mooring will be under extreme time pressure either to get hooked up when acquiring or to get in gear and get going when leaving before adverse tidal currents threatens a collision with the paired boat. Our research indicates that you may have around thirteen seconds before impact. Frequent fifteen-knot winds will only add to the problem. The NMA did a survey of the mooring permit holders concerning the advisability.
Thank you very much.
...already been presented, so I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda?
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. When you return to the agenda, the next item you'll be discussing is the, called the Legislative Platform for the City of Newport Beach. I may have misunderstood. I think somebody this afternoon referred to that as a list of priorities for the city. So what I wanted to mention is something that is not on the agenda, which is actually a list of priorities that the council wants the city staff to be working on in the coming year. And for those of you who maybe have not been following council meetings for a very long time, may not know that for many years, at its annual planning session, the council actually discussed what priorities, what things they wanted the city staff to be working on and focusing on during the coming year. And that list was then brought back as an agenda item for the council as a whole to confirm that that was indeed the focus that they wanted the staff to have in the coming years. I have not seen such an item of priorities coming back for the last, I would say, six or eight years. And I just wanted to suggest to you, especially the new council members, perhaps that is a useful exercise to actually put in writing what you want the priorities to be, not just positions like this, but actually what you want the city staff to be working on, and have that as an agenda item for everybody to see that you've agreed to that. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Wonderful. We're going to move on to current business. Item sixteen, resolution number two-zero-two-three-dash-fourteen, approving an updated legislative platform. Thank you. Staff report?
Well, good evening, mayor, and members of the council. The city's legislative platform, which is a summary of its core legislative principles and positions, was last updated in 2019. After consulting with our lobbying firms, we do have a federal lobbyist and a state and county lobbyist, and also talking with our department directors, staff proposed some changes to the platform for your consideration. A draft of those changes was attached to your initial staff report. There was a red line included as attachment B, and resolution twenty-twenty-three-dash-fourteen included a clean version of staff's proposed changes. Since the agenda was posted, two council members suggested additional changes. So today, we prepared a new red line that actually was a red line to the clean version that was attached to the resolution, and that was distributed today to, it was posted on our website. There are copies in the back of the room and also shared with the council. So tonight, staff is asking you to consider the combined changes to the platform. We do, if you would like to look at these in depth, we do have a presentation if you would like to see that tonight. And that's my report.
Does anyone up here look for a presentation tonight? Great. Let's bring it up to the dais for some questions. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just real quick. I had asked for the red line version that's up with us. I'd asked for us to be able to support legislation in lines with council policy, F-ten. So I appreciate seeing that in there.
Wonderful. Councilmember Grant?
I appreciate all the hard work that goes into this. It's a very comprehensive platform. And of course, there's a lot that we want to achieve on a state level. Everybody up here would have, you know, we'd be unanimous in a lot of things that we want to achieve. I just feel like as a planning document, or as a document that we're going to sort of use in the city for the coming year, I think in the next generation of it, maybe we could be a little bit more honed in on what we're looking at presenting on a legislative platform. I agree. It's not that I want to make changes, or I don't agree with things that are in there, but it's so comprehensive, it really actually could incorporate anything possible that we can envision happening in Sacramento, or DC, or around the world even. And I think that we would be better served with some tighter concepting, and maybe that's something that we can work towards in our next generation of this. I understand it's a very comprehensive document, and we use it so, you know, so closely. And I just want it to be even better for us in the coming years. So thank you for your hard work, and I look forward to maybe, like I mentioned, bringing that into a tighter perspective so that we can really plan for some achievable goals and really work towards tight goals that we can really achieve.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman?
Thank you, mayor. So some of this new red line are some changes that I had suggested, and I'll just quickly kind of give an overview of those. The addition of Charter City to our guiding principles, and the promotion of economic development, as well as the addition of language on accountability for both residential care facilities and RENA, and refinements to our aviation guidelines, as well as public safety and homelessness, just to give us some opportunities to really pursue some of the things that particularly the newer council members, but I think all of us would like to accomplish going forward.
Wonderful. Councilmember Stapleton?
I just wanted to mention kudos, terrific effort by staff, and I applaud my fellow council members for their additions, and I couldn't be more on the, on the same page when it comes to our guiding principles, which is, you know, preserving local control, maintaining fiscal responsibility, protecting quality of life, and certainly supporting private property rights. So just terrific job, and look forward to continue to focus on this.
Wonderful. Before I make any comments, I'm going to go back out to the public. We have any comments from the public on this item? I'm not looking at you, Jim. Okay, perfect. Let's bring it back up here. I just wanted to say that, you know, and I, I respect all views up and down. I think sometimes it is nice to have a broad view when it comes to our lobbyists and legislation, just because there are so many intricacies that start developing, and you have to kind of push them in that direction. And this document really gives us the ability to work with those lobbyists to try to get some of the things done. And I think, I, I agree with Robin, or Councilmember Grant, that this is a, it's a very in-depth document, and we're, we have a lot going on in it. And I think that just speaks to how much we have going on in the city. We have a lot going on here, and we've really taken a larger stance at trying to advocate for our positions on both a regional level, a state level, and a federal level. And I think it's extremely important. It's kind of, we've seen a transition in our own governance here. We would always like to have the most local control possible, and then I think this document would almost be non-existent if they gave us all the local control back. But because of the current state of the world, I think we have branched out and really tried to put a focus on a lot of things. So I commend staff for this document, and I thank you very much for the, the, the late hours of trying to make some changes to it last night. So thank you very much for that. Mayor Protem?
I was going to make a motion. Did you want to speak first before I did?
Just briefly.
Okay. Councilmember Avery?
Yeah, the additional items is great. These are, as I read through them all, they're all existential items for us living in the city. Every one of them is important to our health, happiness, and ability to raise our families in this town. Certainly, supporting private property rights is important, but, but also with that is housing and land use regulations, and I really like some of the language in that one, or protecting our residents from a variety of threats to the peaceful enjoyment of their homes, which is at the bottom of the pyramid in terms of having a happy life, is living in a secure home where you're not bothered by externalities like the airport, or a short-term rental, that kind of thing. So it's high on my list, and I'm glad to see it here. But there are no surprises in this, it seems to me, for anybody that follows council, that these are the things you'd expect to see, and I'm happy to support it.
Wonderful. We had a motion from Mayor Protem O'Neil.
So my motion will be to incorporate in the new red line and, and the rest of staff recommendation.
Perfect. I have a second. Councilmember Kleiman?
Second.
Next vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
Wonderful. Let's move on to item number seventeen, the appointments of planning commissioners to fill the unscheduled vacancies. Before council votes, do we have any public comments on this item? Before council votes, do we have any public comments on this item? Seeing none. Perfect. Let's vote.
As a reminder, in order to be appointed, these nominees must receive at least four votes, and there are two vacancies to fill. So, Councilmember Wigan voted for Brady Barto and Jonathan Langford. Councilmember Avery voted for Brady Barto and David Celine. Councilmember Grant voted for Jonathan Langford and Debbie Stevens. Councilmember Kleiman voted for Brady Barto and Jonathan Langford. Councilmember Stapleton, Brady Barto and Jonathan Langford. Mayor Protam O'Neill, Brady Barto and Jonathan Langford. And Mayor Blom, Brady Barto and Jonathan Langford. With six votes each for Brady Barto and Jonathan Langford, they are our new appointees, and we also need to determine which of the two will serve for the June 30th, 2025 term, and one for June 30th, 2024. If I have any suggestions by council.
Great. You know, perfect. Oh, Mr. Wigan, let's go to the planning commissioners at this point. X.
As a planning commissioner who had to deal with this issue when I became a planning commissioner, I would suggest a coin toss.
Wow. True government. Do you own a coin?
And the coin toss, let's play with this. Shall we have heads be the, we have a one-year term and a two-year term? Is that what we're debating here?
Who is getting the 2024 term and who's getting the 2020?
The winner of the toss gets the longer term?
And do we have to have a coin toss to determine who the person is?
We'll make Jonathan heads and Brady tails. Okay, good.
Does everyone have that written down?
Jonathan is head and Brady is...
The bureaucracy at its best right here, people.
Jonathan head, Brady tails. I'll call it. Go ahead.
It was aggressive.
It was aggressive.
It's tails.
Tails.
Okay. All right. So, Brady Barto will be serving until June 30th of 2025, and Jonathan Langford will be serving until June 30th of 2024. Wow. All right. Is that a first up here? Have we run a coin toss?
I second.
Wonderful. Okay. We're going to move on to item 18. I'm going to recuse myself on item 18 based on the perception of bias on this one.
Yeah.
I think it's important to note that the mayor doesn't actually have a conflict, but given that his father is one of the proposed people that are up for appointment, he's recusing himself.
Yep. So, the staff recommendation at the beginning of this, which we need to discuss up here, was given the number of people that ultimately applied in to actually go through the process of interviewing and making an ad hoc recommendation. So, the discussion we had had up here was whether we should do it on a one-off basis or roll it into the next. Councilmember Wigan originally suggested that we continue this item into the general review of all of our boards, commissions, committees. Do we have any other discussion up here? So, the, just for folks out in the audience, the expectation is that it'll come back after public comment. There's compelling public comment to the contrary. We would make a motion to continue this item basically into the next review, which would probably take place in July, August.
Earlier than that. Opening begins in April, closes in May, and then nominations and appointments occur in June.
Got it. Okay. All right. Let's go out to public comment on this item. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. I'll go ahead and make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Second by Councilmember Wigan. Let's go ahead and vote.
With Mayor Blom recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, can you please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Wonderful. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none? We are adjourned.